Come to order. Madam Clerk, has the warrant been properly posted as required by the Massachusetts general laws and the bylaws of the town of Granby?
Yes, at the house.
Please rise as Select Board Chairman Mr. Bale will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, on a mission under God, in this world, in this justice.
If you are a non-resident or non-voter, please sit in the designated area in the back of the gym. If you'd like to comment or discuss an article as moved, please raise your hand high so that I can see you and wait for the mic to come to you. When the mic gets to you, please state your name and address and then your question. Please present all your discussion and question directed towards me and not to an individual person at town meeting. Finally, before we begin moving the articles, our town auditor, Tom Scanlon, is here tonight. In the event a question arises that he can answer, since he's not a town member, I need your permission to allow him to speak at tonight's meeting. So with that, can I have somebody please move, make a motion?
Motion.
And a second?
Question.
All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. So we now have permission for our town auditor to speak tonight. The moderator will now recognize Mr. Berry to present the motion under Article One.
I move the town vote to supplement each prior vote of the town that authorizes borrowing of money to pay costs of capital projects to provide, in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of the general laws, the premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes thereunder, unless any such premium applied to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to pay project costs, and the amount authorized to be borrowed for each such project shall be reduced by the amount of any such premium so applied.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Do you want to explain it?
I could try to explain this. The legislature requires us to vote as to how we're going to spend any premium that we get on bonds. So this vote is to apply those premiums to the project costs.
Any discussion or further questions? You have a question?
No.
In order for the motion under the first article to pass, it must pass by a majority vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? The motion passes unanimously. The moderator will now call Lou Berry to present the motion under Article Two.
I move that the town votes to approve and authorize the Board of Selectmen and Board of Assessors to sign the payment in lieu of tax or pilot agreement between the town of Granby and Kearsarge Granby 6 LLC, Kearsarge Granby 7 LLC, Kearsarge Granby 5 LLC, Kearsarge Granby 2 LLC, and Kearsarge Granby 1 LLC.
Second? Discussion?
If you may remember, the prior town meeting, the town voted to authorize the board to enter into pilot agreements with Kearsarge. Kearsarge is the group that has put the solar fields down on East Street on the property that was under the control of the W- of the Westover WMDC, excuse me. We- there's two ways to handle the taxes on that. We can either tax it as regular property, and I'm hopeful- hopefully I'm explaining this properly, in which case it can be depreciated rather rapidly, so we'd receive a large payment in the beginning that would decrease substantially over time as the value of the solar field is depreciated. Or we can enter in an agreement such as we have, which spreads out the payment in lieu of the taxes over a longer period of time. So as a result, this agreement will bring in, for each parcel, and there's five of them, just over $7,000, $7,085 a year, times the five parcels, which is approximately $35,425 in tax revenue a year, or over the course of the 20-year pilot agreement, which is the anticipated lifespan of the solar field, $708,500 will be received by the town.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of Article Two as moved, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? The motion under Article Two passes unanimously. The moderator will now call on Steve Shonacki to present the motion under Article Three.
Good evening, everybody. I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $178,113.50 for the purpose of funding the school lunch deficit as of June 30, 2016.
Second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Mark will explain this motion and then I'll get to you, okay?
It's not a surprise that we've been having a lot of problems with the budget at the schools. It's also not a surprise that we've had a fair bit of turbulence in terms of management in the central office. School lunch program's been losing money for several years now. We've been aware of that on the town side every year. Previous superintendents were informed of shortfall. It was also the Finance Committee brought it up with those- with those previous superintendents as well. So as part of the town side of government, it's our responsibility to bring this forward. It's the school's responsibility to deal with the deficit and stuff, so I can't answer any questions on that. But I am confident that we have the people, the superintendent and the school committee in place that they will deal with these things. We were allowed to run a deficit for a while, but then our town auditor, who basically is kind of our go-between, between the town and the state, the state said, "Okay, that's enough. Pay it." So that's why we're here tonight.
Thank you. Go ahead.
John Matthew from 288 Taylor Street. Some real basic questions is that, how did this get about to where we are today on $178,000? Each year, it's- it's there and it's increasing. Why is that? And the second question is, have anyone up here explored other alternatives other than taking free cash to pay for our mistakes here? What other alternatives do we have to pay this?
Thank you.
I guess I would disagree with the mistake part. Lunch program costs more money. Lunch programs across the Commonwealth and across the United States are typically running at a deficit now. This is not abnormal, is that correct, Tom? Basically, school lunches are not paying for themselves. So the reason it wasn't addressed earlier is, I think, probably has to do with the past management in the school, which is about as euphemistically as I can put it. So but it'll be up to the school committee to address it. I don't know if that answers your question.
John, come forward.
I'm John Libero speaking on behalf of the Finance Committee. The Finance Committee, in some conversations before this meeting, asked if this article not be read tonight, instead be withdrawn. And the reason is that we don't think this is the appropriate time to discuss this article, and I'll tell you about that later. But since it was read, the discussion we had beforehand means that we have to actually take a vote on it. Apparently, I'm not able to just make a motion that we table this or postpone it indefinitely and then bring it up in the special town meeting in the spring. So if in fact we have to vote on it, then the Finance Committee recommends that you vote it down, you vote against it, and we'll bring it back up in the springtime at the time when it should be discussed. Now here's the reason. Unlike the next two articles, which as you'll hear are really just kind of accounting mishaps and don't involve any real money for the town, for the school, for the taxpayers, it's just going to be some adjustments on some books, that's what the auditor has found out. This one is different. This is real money. The school department has so far overspent by $178,000 over the last few years on this school lunch account. And the thing is, that is the figure as of last June. The problem hasn't stopped. Already in the accounting on the books through November, there are another $19,000 in the hole on the school lunch program for this year. There is a management letter going back to 2011 where the superintendent has signed state- has a statement in the management letter saying that they recognize that this is a problem. Virtually, well, not necessarily every year, but certainly in at least two of the last three years, the- there's been discussions with members of the school committee, individual members of the school committee, about this problem. And not only has nothing been done, the problem has gotten worse every year. I mean, we're now talking about adding an extra possibly $40,000 to this deficit. So what this is, this is really a management, a financial management question of the schools. And as such, we think that it ought to be discussed at the time when we're discussing the school budgets. Now, at the town meetings coming up, May and June, and special town meeting that we always have in May, that's the time when everyone has had a chance to take a look at budgets, had a chance to take a look at the budgets for this year and how they're doing on spending it, has a chance to take a look at the budget for next year and find out how much money they're going to ask for, for what they want to do. And we believe that that's the appropriate time to discuss this, when we see this within the context of the whole financial management of the school system, not dole out $50,000 here, $178,000 there, $190,000 there. So we would suggest that if we in fact cannot table this or postpone it indefinitely, that when it comes up for a vote, that you vote it down tonight, and then we bring it back up in the spring at the appropriate time and have the discussion then. Thank you very much.
In the front.
Rich Demeraki, Bachelor Street. Actually, I agree 100% with what John just said. This article deals with actual cash, but there are a couple problems or areas that have to be looked at. Number one, there was a select board meeting about a week or two ago where the- these items were discussed, the town, the outside auditor was there, and the select board would not let any taxpayers ask any questions whatsoever about these articles, and I thought that was very unfair. The second thing is, there's- one issue is the school department is showing one number for school lunch, the town is showing another number for school lunch. So the numbers don't even agree. So no one could really tell what's the right number. And I've been told that even as of now, the communication between the town and the school committee is not really what it should be. They still aren't checking their records month to month to make sure that the balances are in agreement between the town and the school. So that is an issue. But I do agree with John that I think this should be voted down. I do believe that any deficit in the school lunch program for this year should be taken out of the school budget, not from the town funds.
Thank you.
My name is Emre Erven. I am the chair of the school committee. On this subject of school lunch deficit, first of all, just to clarify a couple of points. One is that it's not really related, because it may cause confusion, it's not really related to this year's school budget. We're talking about past budgets and some deficits that accumulated. So let me give you a little bit of history around this issue. The first is that the school committee, for the first time, became aware of this issue last year when we met with the town auditor, town administrator, I think it was Mr. Bale, and the school business manager, to basically go over the numbers. The reason why it was the first time we saw these numbers, one, we were not really included in all of those conversations in the previous years. There are a few reasons based on our understanding for that. One is that we are looking at two different ledgers. We're looking at the books on the school side, and we're looking at the books on the town side. On the school side, transfers were made, at least from the school financial management perspective, to close whatever deficit existed at the end of the year. That's the way those deficits were dealt. And sometimes we have these gaps between the two ledgers. So under- under this particular issue, we actually have two different problems. The first one is the school lunch deficit. That is, for every year, the last so many years, as John mentioned, there is some deficit this year, but it's not necessarily a final end-of-year deficit. As you know, lunch service providers, they spend the money upfront to build their inventory. Whatever we are seeing is not necessarily the end-of-the-year deficit, and we are currently working on that. The amount is $17,000, not $19,000. So that is simple accounting, actually. Why? Because currently, the revenue that we're generating for our school lunch program is less than the expenses we're incurring. It may sound simplistic, basically that's what it is. As Mr. Bale said, this is not the only school district that is experiencing this problem. In fact, during the last select board meeting, our town auditor referred to the problem as a common problem across Commonwealth. Some examples, currently, some towns that are experiencing similar problems nearby would be Belcher Town, Loudlow, and East Hampton. So we're not alone in this problem. Doesn't mean that we should not look into it and we should not solve it. Absolutely, we should do that. How are we going to do that? There are two ways of doing it, as you know. One is looking at the revenue side and see how we can increase the revenues on the school lunch program. And the other side is the cost side. How can we reduce the cost so that we can find that point where we're gonna- we're gonna break even? That's the problem that we're experiencing from an accounting perspective every year, the school lunch deficit. How did we get here? How do we suddenly are- how are we suddenly looking at a deficit of $178,000? So probably the best way to explain that, based on what I said as I started, there is a major miscommunication or lack of communication across the board in our town. That includes us on the school side, that includes the school committee, and every single one of the school committee members will take that responsibility as well. The challenge is, unless we start discussing how we're going to solve these deficits and we share the numbers, there is nothing the school committee or the school business office can do about these things. Until last year, until May last year, we did not hear about this problem. Since then, if you are watching our meetings on Channel 15 or on YouTube, you are seeing that this is a constant topic that we are discussing. In fact, we are now receiving monthly reports from Chartwells, which is the service provider for our lunch. We are gonna have them again at one of our meetings, upcoming meetings, to discuss the past deficits and see how we got there, especially with respect to last year, but also what John mentioned, the current deficit, so that we can hopefully eliminate that deficit by the end of this year. That said, our understanding is that the vote that's going to be taken tonight, for which we have really no preference, it's up to the town meeting whether they would like to vote tonight or not, it is affecting the overall free cash flow into the town. We just didn't want to be in a position to be- to be impeding that flow of free cash. All we can tell you right now is that we are working to create a process that will be documented, that will let everybody know in the process, that is, the school committee, that is, the school administration, that is, the school business office, that includes the select board, the town administrator, we're gonna let everybody know what we believe will be a solution to our problem in terms of the process that we should follow, so that in the coming years, we do not have these miscommunications, lack of communications, and we'll find out about these early on so we can deal with them properly. Other than that, what, quite frankly, what we end up doing is pointing fingers and trying to find the guilty party. Many of these deficits have been incurred in the past years. Many of those folks are not on the school committee, many of those folks are not even in the positions that they were in. Our preference as a school committee is take responsibility for it, take accountability for it, that's fine, but how do we solve the problem so we do not really run into the same issues and we do not come back to another special town meeting next year to discuss the same problem? I don't know if this is answering everything that you have, but I just wanted to share everything that we know as a school committee so far.
Any further questions or discussion? Microphone's coming.
Thank you. George Randall, 52 Taylor. Initially, when I read the notice of this meeting in the paper, I thought it might have been an error on the part of the accounting firm, and I thought that the town might do well to look into a potential claim under their errors and omissions policy. I'm- I was very pleased to speak to Mr. Scanlon, and I've learned that the town knew that we were in- in a deficit here. So there won't be any suggestion to move forward with any claim under an errors and omission policy. As a taxpayer, I find it kind of unsettling that you're now back looking at it for me for my share of $178,000 bucks. Excuse me. I think that's unconscionable that that amount of money has come forward at this time. And Emre, I'm sorry that I've- can't remember your exact words, but there was a lack of communication between the school board and the school committee and so on and so forth. Guys, get your stuff together and get it together quick, because $178,000 this year, what's it gonna be next year and the year after? We can't keep going like this. You guys can't keep coming back to the well. My well is drying up. I don't know about any- anybody else's. And that's it.
Thank you. Further discussion?
I have a question for John. John, not that I'm thinking about it, what benefit is there to delaying this for so many months? What's the purpose of that?
John Libero speaking for the Finance Committee. The benefit is this, a number of people have spoken about the old management of the schools, the financial management. Even Emre basically said the same- same thing I said. They don't know yet what they're gonna do. They're working on stuff. That's sort of the point, that we have a problem. We know that for the past years, just remember what was being asked for at special town meetings, fairly large sums of money. Not an admission that they want to keep spending this amount of money, but say, "No, this is gonna be, we'll see what happens, take it out of free cash." It doesn't work that way. Year after year, there's more and more amounts of money. So when the springtime comes around, and it's an intensive budget season, and we're looking at annual meetings, the annual town meetings, that's the time when the town can really focus and when the school committee can really focus and the finance committee can focus and the select board can focus on the things that need to be done in the large picture for the town. And we think that this is part of the large picture of the financial management of the schools. And so later on, we would hope that by the time April and May roll around, the school committee will have had some ideas that may actually work to present or that actually may actually work out, whereas now they don't. They said they don't. They're hoping that this works out, they're hoping that works out. So put it in the context of the overall financial picture and ask, "When is that overall financial picture discussed?" That's the springtime. So we say, "Let's bring it back for a discussion in the spring. Don't vote it now. We don't have all the information. You don't have the information from either side to be able to make an informed decision now." Thank you.
She's coming with the mic.
Marie McCourt, School Street, and also on the school committee. I think what's important to remember is that this is not- we're not asking for $178,000 for this year. This is something that happened from 2010 forward, and I find it very funny that there's, you know, some confusion trying to be spoken here. So it's really important to understand that these things were happening along the way. The school commi- current school committee was not part of the problem. We're trying to solve what we can do from forward, but it's really important that people understand that this- this was going on before and we did not know about it. We're trying to work on current. We can't fix what's in the past. So the state says it has to be paid. How do we not pay it?
Just a quick note on what John said. I think that is another- another indication of the type of miscommunication that I just mentioned. We did not know until this evening, for instance, that there was going to be a desire to discuss and to push this forward. Again, it's not the school committee's purview to tell the town meeting how to vote and when we vote for this. But we have to get to a point where we have the discuss- these discussions when they matter, not after the fact, when they matter as the problems are piling up. We are looking to the Finance Committee to provide us some information, some guidance as well. When I said the miscommunication is across the board, I'm including everybody that you are seeing here, including us. But two things, like Marie said, going forward, we have to find a way to solve the problem. Just with a slight correction to what John said, it's a hope, it's always a hope to correct the problem. What we are working on putting together a concrete process so that you can all see. Anything that we do, as you know, is in front of the camera, and whatever comes out of it is posted on our website. You can see what process will be out there for us to be able to stay on top of this. All we are doing, I agree with you, George, this is an accountability on the school committee's part as well. And that's exactly what we're trying to do. We are taxpayers as well. We care about the money that goes to expenses that could have otherwise been used for educational purposes, absolutely. And that's the reason why we're trying to do our best, in the shortest amount possible, to create a process that will help us eliminate this problem. We're just trying to be realistic in light of all the other problems that are existing in our area. Our goal is to eliminate it. That's our target, and we're gonna put the process together. But at the end of the day, if anything else happens, again, in spring, in summer, it is up to the town meeting to hold us accountable. And we are asking you to hold us accountable too. None of the members of the school committee are here trying to shy away from any responsibility. Otherwise, we have no reason to be on that school committee. We're not- we're volunteers, we're basically spending countless hours trying to find all these problems, not- not this one, but many other problems to be able to solve them. So I just want to make sure that we understand, as we are discussing this problem, that this is not something- this is not something that we are trying to sweep under the rug, this is one of those problems that we came into realization last year, and we are seriously working on solving and eliminating.
Mr. Matthew.
John Matthew, 288 Taylor Street. First thing, I really appreciate, and you should be applauded, when you said you want us to make you accountable, and the school committee accountable, and that's awesome, and you're going to develop a better process to eliminate these problems. However, we have a $178,000 bill that needs to be paid, and to come to the taxpayers to fund over $178,000 for a problem that you know came from your department over the years, and you want us to make you accountable, I think by making you accountable, by taking it out of your current school budget, is the best thing to do, because that will make you enthusiastic, because you will never, ever want to have money taken back from you. That's the only way, in my opinion, that will make you accountable, which you said you want us to do. Thank you.
Yes, you can respond.
Thank you for that, and again, just hold us accountable. The challenge is, I see what you're saying, the challenge is, when the $178,000 are taken out of current budget, it goes beyond holding us accountable, it hurts the students, it takes away from our education and everything else that we're doing. We did not have $178,000 allocated for this, or planned for this, if we had known, we would have, but we don't have it. Something that is not planned in the budget will be taking away, will be taking away from the most important expenses in our school system, which is addressing the educational needs of our students.
Mr. Bale.
Albert Bale, 40 North Street, Cranby, Mass. I'm furious. The reason I'm furious is I came out in a very cold night to vote on what is probably the most important part of this agenda, and for somebody to tell me that I'm not as important as the town meeting, the annual town meeting, when we're going to be all busy thinking about everything else, I'm furious, and I would be violently against postponing this article. Let's act on it tonight. We came out tonight to act on it, act on it tonight. Last question is, is there a procedure in place to see that this does not happen again?
There is a, if you watched the last school meeting, Al, you're going to see that we had a lot of conversations around it. There is a process that we talked about, yes, and if you also watched it, we said, until we write it down and document it for everyone to see, and for us to really hold us against it, there is none, and that's what we're working on. But yes, there has been conversations, and there is a process that we're talking about, we're working, the school committee is working with the business manager, and once it is available, once that comes together very soon, we're going to share it with everybody else who's a stakeholder in this process as well. It's not going to be just, we know it, we created it, it's going to sit on that side, it's going to be a process that will be shared with everyone who's a stakeholder.
We have another question in the back here, in the back here, the lady in red.
Deb Matthew, Taylor Street, question for the auditor, if he can answer. Is there a report that the citizens can look at on the auditor's investigation of the lack of accountability that took place at the finance division of the school department? If there's a thing, it'd be great to be able to see it, a report.
Mr. Scanlon, you can put the microphone.
On a yearly basis, we produce a management letter that I can send in PDF form, and you can post them on the website if you like, or, and there's financial statement audits that go back from 2010, you can see a whole analysis of the school lunch fund for the past 10 years, if you want.
Gentleman in the middle there.
Jeff Lawson, Burke Lane. It was mentioned that the state said that we have to pay this, did they give us a timeline or any type of date that it's due by, and if we don't make that date, are we going to be hit with penalties, or surcharges, or anything?
We have to have it by the next time we set the tax rate, which will be in November of 2017, not fiscal year, but regular year. We would probably deal with it at a special town meeting, at annual town meeting, we always have a special town meeting, so that would be when we would do it, if that were the case.
Any other discussion, over here, please?
Elaine LaFleur, 235 Chickaby Street. So, taking into consideration that this has stemmed from 2010, and unfortunately, our current school committee has inherited this, my concern is, how much larger will this number grow, when we're really in a situation where, you know, what's in free cash? We are not even halfway through our winter season, God knows if we're going to go over budget, and we're going to need highway department money for snow plowing and repair of roads. I'm just really concerned that this number is just going to continually grow, and I got my tax bill the other day, and it's hefty, and I know it's going to go up, because I want to support a new school. So, we really need to act on this.
I think we're kind of getting a little, due to probably what we said, that things are getting a little confused here. In terms of, I will, Emery's my good friend, but I'll completely disagree with him when it comes to the communication aspect of things, on this particular article, the way a school works is that you have a superintendent, you have a school business manager, and you have a school committee. Ordinarily, the school committee does not need to get into the finest details that this school committee has gotten into, they've had to, because of previous superintendents, they've needed to get in there and look at every expenditure. I mean, they went through things, I know Emery did, going through cell by cell. The communication's supposed to take place within the school, that didn't happen in this particular case. We were aware of it, but we couldn't, it's another thing to, for us to say, okay, we're going to pay off this deficit with, when we didn't have basically a partner who could do that with us on the school side. So, that's one thing. So, the mismanagement, it's not mismanagement, the money, if you want to be perfectly concrete about it, this $178,000, our kids ate it, this paid for school lunch. Yes, it was more than, it's been building up, because we haven't paid it over the years, but it's been used, it was eaten, so we need to take care of that, and pay for the school lunch. Terms of free cash, free cash, we have $1.16 million right now, and just so people know what free cash is, it's not free. What it is, is basically leftover, the difference between how much money we spent, and how much money we collected in taxes. State mandates that we have free cash, the state certifies that we have free cash, and it's that certification that means that we're free to spend it. So, if other bills come up, yeah, we're covered, so this isn't, and this bill's going to be there now, or it's going to be there in May or June when you pay for it, so.
Do you have a follow-up question?
Elaine LaFleur, 235 Chickaby Street. So, Mr. Randall mentioned something about E and O coverage, I know you folks pay E and O insurance, is it because of, I guess I'm curious to know, if there was some negligence or some issue with that E and O insurance, I guess I'm just confused about that portion.
School lunches don't pay for themselves, is basically what happens. We can't, I mean, maybe one of the things the school committee is thinking about would be increasing the amount, the price for a lunch, but basically, the amount that's charged for lunch does not cover the cost of the lunch, for all the stuff, things I found out about that, I never knew, is you have to pay for extermination costs and inspections to make sure everything's good there. So, anyway, the school lunch does just not pay for itself. So, the money here is not from malfeasance, it's not from anything, it's not even from incompetence, the money itself, the deficit, is just the fact that every year, we run a deficit on it, every year, almost every school is running a deficit on it since about 2008, 2009, and this is what we're looking at. It's not anything anybody did wrong, it's just that we didn't have somebody in place to actually address the school deficit with lunch, we would have been paying for it one way or another.
So, unless somebody has a question that hasn't been answered, or is a different thread of the discussion we've had already tonight, we are probably ready to vote. Do you have one more question that, apparently you have a few questions, go ahead, in the front here in the plaid shirt.
Wenda Luff, 21 Taylor Street. I was talking to a person who used to be involved in school lunches, and he says, any town that has got involved with a company that provides the lunches is ending up with a huge deficit. Towns that do their own lunch program are not ending up in this deficit, so that's where it sounds like the challenge is in this town.
Thank you, and behind you.
Rich Damaraki, I have a question for the outside auditor. I'm a CPA, and I've done many management reports, in your management report, have you made a comment about the lack of communication between the school and the town, and did you make note of differences in account balances between the town and the school? And if not, why not?
In 2011 and '12, yeah, we made a comment about a lack of communication and failure to reconcile their school records to the general ledger of the town, that was in management letters 11 and '12, and then 13 and '14 also. They say, yeah, you know, I can send them to Chris, and post them on the website, if you want to read them. It doesn't specifically say, reference the school choice and the circuit breaker, but generically, it's ordinary.
One last question.
Good evening, Greg Leonard, 168 Bachelor Street, and a big thank you to everyone that showed up this evening, thank you to the school committee, and the finance committee, I really appreciate what you guys do in the select board. In simplest terms, what I've heard is, the finance committee says that we can and should put this off till we're making a big discussion, and from the chair of the school committee, that they are working it out, and I appreciate what you guys have inherited, and it's not going to be easy, but I'm sure that you will work it out. And given that I haven't heard any urgency to vote and approve this tonight, I think I would take John's advice and vote to wait until the town meeting.
Thank you. So, in order for the motion under Article III to pass, it must pass by a majority. So, all those in favor of the motion under Article III, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? I need counters. You can put your cards down. Solane, you have the bleachers? Right, all right, so all those in favor of the motion under Article III, please raise Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your cards. We had 37 noes and 30 yeses, so the motion under Article III fails. The moderator will now call on Mr. Bale to present the motion under Article IV.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town votes to transfer from free cash the sum of $122,501.29 for the purpose of funding the school special education circuit breaker deficit as of June 30, 2016.
Second, any discussion?
This is actually an accounting issue. To a household, the word deficit means we owe money. For this question, the one that will follow, it means something different. We have deficits because the money was in the wrong account. In other words, one account owed the other account, we don't owe anybody else anything. So, if you think of the town, if you could think of the town for a minute as if it were your household, and you had one checking account, we'd be fixing the problem tonight, we wouldn't have to be fixing the problem tonight, because we wouldn't have taken money from one account to pay something else. So, due to clerical error, what we're doing is shifting money from one account to another, and for the sake of transparency, our auditor thought we should do this at town meeting. So, what happened was, we had more money put into free cash than was supposed to be put into free cash, it was supposed to be put into this account, and that's it, basically, we're just basically taking money from one pocket and putting it back into the other pocket, and this happened 2012.
Does she have a comment?
John Lovero speaking for the finance committee. For this article and for the next article, as I indicated earlier, the finance committee recommends that you vote in favor of them. They're almost not an issue, it's just money showed up in one pocket rather than another, and to fix up the accounting, we have to vote in favor of this to make it work out. But there is really no money involved that makes a difference to anybody, one way or the other, except that it's got to get straightened out. So, we recommend you vote in favor of this and then the next, thank you.
Any questions? Up front, please. You, Rich, yeah.
Rich Damaraki, I do agree, this is just really transferring money from one account to the other, it's staying within the town, but this brings you back to the issue of communication between the town and the school department. If there was better communication, this error would have probably been found a lot sooner, and it could have been corrected sooner. But again, the cash stays within the town, so it's not that big of a concern, but you go back to the communication issue.
We've addressed that aspect of things, that was, our current accountant is Chris Martin, this was done, we had hired the accountant from the Hampshire Council of Governments, and their contract has been terminated since 2014, so.
So, in order for the motion to pass under Article IV, it would So in order for the motion to pass under Article IV, it requires a majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? The motion passes unanimously. The moderator will now call on Mr. Bale to present the motion under Article V.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town votes to transfer from free cash the sum of $98,039.79 for the purpose of funding the school choice deficit as of June 30, 2016.
Second. Discussion?
This is basically the same problem. The money was put into free cash instead of into this account, so the account came up short. We're just transferring it back from free cash.
Any questions? Again, this requires a majority to pass. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? The motion under Article V passes unanimously. The moderator will now call on Mr. Shonaki to present the motion under Article VI.
I move the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $8,000 for the purpose of purchasing chairs.
Second. Discussion? Do you want to explain it?
It's basically, we're buying chairs instead of renting them. What the situation is, every so often, we have to rent chairs. And that, instead of renting them, it's prudent that we turn around and buy them so we don't have to keep on having that same expenditure all the time. And that we'll have them to utilize.
Question, Mr. Demeraki.
I would agree with this, but isn't this something that normally goes to the capital improvements committee first to get approved?
No, the dollar amount's too low.
The dollar amount's too low. Any further questions? So the motion under Article VI to pass must pass by a majority, so all those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? The motion under Article VI passes unanimously. The moderator will now call for a motion to dissolve the special town meeting. Second. All in favor? The special town meeting is now ended. Thank you.